Okay. Call of meeting to order. Please rise for implication and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions that we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it's full of productivity and respect for one another. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes. Chair would need a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on June 4, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. for the discussion consultation with legal counsel in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes. We have a motion.
Second.
And second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Onto official business. And before I get into official business, it really is official. I'd like to recognize our representative Regina Cobb. Good morning Regina. And I'd like to take the liberty of thanking you again for all the tremendous heavy lifting that you did for us to accomplish our budget this year. Fantastic job and also the opportunity to get the $100,000 for the study at the Wallop aquifer. Two huge things, thank you so much. Mr. Ryan. Discussion or litigation claims.
Nothing to reports to the board, thank you.
Okay. Committee reports to my left. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've submitted to the clerk a report on the Lower Colorado River multi-species meeting that was held. It's kind of lengthy, so if anybody's interested. Also, there was a town hall meeting over in Flagstaff with Congressman O'Halloran, basically on the mining issue. I'll just give you what Congressman O'Halloran, he expects, expressed concerns with the speed of the permitting process, the analysis associated with operating or with opening and operating uranium mines, the air quality and the progress and performance of the cleanup and mitigation efforts of the legacy uranium mines. He also expressed concerns that a comprehensive cost benefit analysis was not performed adequately and that the USGS is seriously underfunded and that it has been little science performed that can guarantee that we can avoid the mistakes of the past. Obviously, I disagree with a lot of these, but which are substantial when considered the aggregate. The congressman recognized that there is significant pressure to create new jobs in his district to include the rural, remote and small towns. He used the example of the Sanderson Uranium Mine that contaminated the local water system to suggest that a moratorium should be continued and concluded that the royalties received by the several interested parties in uranium mining should be directed to clean up the legacy mining project. Everybody else who spoke was obviously in opposition except for the people of Fredonia up in that area.
I see.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much and thank you for making those trips. Supervisor Bishop.
My only report as I continue to meet with CSA on legislative issues.
Okay.
That's it for this.
Okay. Supervisor Angus.
Chairman Watson, I assume you'll be speaking about our meeting with the governor on Saturday, so I'll defer that to you.
Well, actually, go ahead. I'll be talking on a couple of other issues.
Okay. Well, we had sort of a last minute pulled together meeting with the governor on Saturday. He was in town for a political event, but he wanted to meet with local representatives and we managed to pull together a pretty good group in the short time we had. We had all the mayors, several city council members from the three cities. We had almost all of the elected officials from Mojave County and we were able to speak with the governor about some of our more local issues going into next year. He spoke about some of the trials and tribulations from the session this year and I know Representative Cobb is there in the audience and I'm looking forward to hearing her report. And all in all, it was a very good meeting and I'm thinking we're going to be seeing a lot of him this year.
Thank you very much.
That's all that's been out.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Wacemoto.
I went to the tri-city council meeting with all the mayors and city council and it's nice to listen to see how well united they are in terms of what affects Mojave County and the support that we have together as a unit. The workforce task, La Paz, Mojave County, thank you very much for doing what you do. We were able to listen to the Green Force team from Mojave County, young people that had difficulty in starting, young men that had difficulty in starting life and now have changed their lives and are committed to the community, committed to improving the community and buy-in in Mojave County. Thanks Dave Wolf for your efforts. And the Crisco Coalition in Havasu where we talked about continuing to make sure that the quality of the Colorado River is maintained.
Thank you Supervisor Wacemoto. I'd just like to further explain Senate Bill 1525 and our success in the legislature and I guarantee you it's duly from the work that is done by Regina Cobb and I just want to thank you again. This is for the Northwest Basins, more specifically the Wallop aquifer. It's for the purposes of contracting with independent counsel to estimate the rate of groundwater depletion in the Northwest Basin planting area and estimate the number of years of groundwater remaining in the basin. And that appropriation is $100,000 for this year. We're hoping that we can go back next year and see if we can't get it expanded a little further and hopefully the Arizona Department of Water Resources will now accept these numbers that will be generated. With that, that's the end of my report. Other than, we're still working diligently with members of the Central Arizona Project to change their mind on a few items concerning water in the Colorado River. So, we're still diligently working on that and I've got to tell you that the people that we have working on it, Patrick Cunningham and the high ground folks are doing an exemplary job. With that, that's the end of my report. County managers report.
I have no reports today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Approve the April 2nd, 2018 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and second for approval. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Now we are on to call to the public. We have several speakers this morning. Those wishing to address the board at the call of republic regarding matters not on the board, agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the republic request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to the items not on the regular agenda with the exception of the consent agenda and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. If we could have. Leann Hugland Smith, please.
Good morning, Leann Hugland Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road, Golden Valley. This is some comments to say thank you. Thank you to this board for protecting the water of Mojave County and continuing that endeavor. It is also thank you, Mr. Watson, Mr. Hendricks, as well as Mr. Lasco, about protecting the economic growth of this county regarding ADOT and frontage roads. I was at a meeting of the Kingman Golden Valley Realtors Association in late April and I learned, much to my chagrin, we have ADOT legislating what I'm going to call from the desk. They are making rules, imposing rules that are going to harm hundreds of parcels, hundreds of landowners along I-40 because they want frontage roads to meet the standards of interstate roads which are 10,000 vehicles per day. And thank you, Mr. Watson, for meeting with them. The two gentlemen, they shared their letter, all their exhibits, were a Mr. William Barnes as well as a Duane Patterson. They are trying to bring in economic growth into this county and ADOT is stopping them. I really encourage you to work as vigorously with that issue as you did with the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaime Morgan. I think I may have slaughtered your first name.
Yes, you did, that's okay. Good morning, my name is Jem Morgan. I'm actually in your district, Mr. Watson, I'm a District 1 constituent. I thank you for having the call to the public. I think this is one of the most important functions for public accountability and being able to express ourselves. What I'd like to speak to first, I didn't know I was going to, is I'd like to follow up on Mr. Watson's comment about Regina Cobb carrying the heavy lifting, doing the heavy lifting to get the budget passed. I'd like to say on behalf of the Red for Ed movement here in Kingman, there was no heavy lifting done for the education here in Mojave County or La Paz County. Representative Cobb voted against each and every single one of the five Red for Ed amendments that would have significantly benefited education here in this county. So I ask this board to be more supportive of education here. But the issue that I came to speak about today is about water rights. They had in the paper, and apparently it's not on this meeting's agenda, that the county is looking to buy 15 acres of property for $250,000 so that you have the water rights so that you can help to control the water going to the Central Arizona Project. Water here in this area is like a great big sippy cup with the straws being water rights. So unless you plan on buying up each and every single piece of property with all of those straws to be able to control, all it takes is one straw to suck the aquifer dry. And so I'm asking you to please find other solutions than buying property rights using, it's very expensive, $250,000 for 15 acres. There's just no way that you're going to be able to control the aquifer in that way. We need to find better solutions for dealing with the water crisis here in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am. And if you'd like to visit after the meeting, we could explain to you why we bought that property. Representative Regina Cobb, would you like to come down and make a few comments? I should have done this before call to the public, but I think you qualify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. For the record, Regina Cobb, State Representative, District 5. And thank you for asking me to talk and you know, anytime you ask a politician to talk, they're going to talk, so. I just want to give you a little bit of background on a few of the things that happened this year and as far as the session goes. One of the things which Chairman Watson mentioned was the $100,000 study. Originally that started at a $200,000 this year and $300 next year was significantly decreased mainly because ADWR is actually doing part of the study right now going on. And this was a study that we were going to have the University of U of A do for us and that way we had an independent person going in and doing the water study rather than it being government and rather than it being a personal person, so. And we had an agreement with all those people. As the budget went through, we ended up with $100,000 and U of A is going to be looking at the, what the statistics and the information we collect from ADWR and make sure that all of that is in the proper form and that it is independent and it's not swayed one way or the other. So that was the first thing that we got to accomplish this year. You guys probably already know this and most of the public might also, was that we were able to get a lot of the cost shifts shifted back this year. The Department of Justice or the juvenile detention, ADJC, that got shifted back, $11.3 million. We were able to get the lottery money ongoing, so I don't have to go back and fight for that every year as I have been in the past. And a few other items that we kind of worked on, especially in the hospital areas, we were able to get the providers 2.5% increase this year, which is significantly greater since they haven't had a raise since 2008 and they had a 30% decrease in provider rates in 2008 and there has not been an increase, so it was nice to give them back a little this year and that helped out the hospitals a little bit. Also, the disproportionate uncompensated care with the hospitals was able to go back to them this year and not be a cost shift. I know that this was something that we had been trying to work on for the last three years and this year we were really able to accomplish a lot more than we have in the past. The big thing was the, was the education, increasing revenue for education. And the lady that spoke earlier said that we were not able to get any of the Red for Ed amendments on there. And we had been working on this budget since early February and if you look at the budget back then and the budget that was released, it was real similar to what we originally had. And what we tried to do was to make sure that we didn't necessarily just lean it completely to education even though we knew education had to be increased and that was our main focus, but we also had other areas that we had to hit also. And so those were our priorities this year and some of the priorities that Red for Ed had, I don't personally agree with and that's, I feel like we've come up to the 2008 level of per pupil funding and less than 2% by the end of this three years. And that's pretty close to the high mark of education. And so hopefully we'll be able to continue that as it's going forward, plus that 20% is inflated. So that's another issue that I think that some of the public hasn't been seeing also. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you guys have any questions of me, but thank you for having me.
Questions for Representative Cobb?
Chairman Watson, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment and I wanted to echo what Supervisor Watson said. We really, really appreciate what you did this year as far as the state budget and how it trickles down. It's going to help the county budget immensely and I am so excited to work on the budget this year.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I would also like to add my thank you for everything that you've done for the future of Mojave County in terms of allowing us to keep our water and make sure that Mojave County is able to continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wacemoto, I want to just mention one other thing as far as the water goes. When we were listening also to the call to the public, someone said something about why we're buying this property and what's going forward and I hope you can explain to her why, but we need to keep the assaults going and coming from all different directions. As you know, I contacted the Attorney General and MBIDD and asked them to look into the conflict of interest on that and they are taking that seriously, I think. And that's not going to be the last of my comments on that one. And again, the water, we're looking at different areas. Obviously, we're doing the studies in the Wallop High Basin and we're trying to move forward with other areas to make sure that we have a full-on assault and we're able to keep our water in Mojave County. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful job, thank you so much.
Chairman Watson, may I say something? Chairman Watson?
Hildy, yes Supervisor Angus.
I just wanted to add another thank you to Representative Cobb. You know, we talk about CSA being our lobby group and our voice down there, but we are lobby for our community and we have a direct pipeline to our representatives Regina Cobb and Senator Sonny Borelli and they are always there, always answer the phone, always return the call, always getting the information in a manner that is sort of unprecedented since I've been on the board. So I wanted to publicly thank them for doing a terrific job.
Thank you Supervisor. Thank you. Jacqueline Roper.
Good morning. My name is Jacqueline Roper. My husband, Michael, and I purchased our home in Kingman 14 years ago and I'm here today to introduce myself to the board as the author of a letter you received last Monday regarding the positive impact of the amendment to Mojave County's anti-littering ordinance passed last April 3, 2017. My husband contacted our supervisor and we filed a complaint on May 8 of 2017 against the property owner of a lot adjacent to us that had been continually gathering more and more litter and junk. An inspection was completed after that filing and the property was in violation of the Mojave Ordinance Section 19, establishing a junkyard, Section 37 E5A, fences, hedges and similar structures, Section 37 O1, open lot storage standards, Section 35 setbacks and area requirements. In addition, Arizona Revised Statute, Section 11-815, which states, "It is unlawful to erect, construct, reconstruct, maintain or use any land in any zoning district in violation of any regulation or provision of any ordinance pertaining thereto," which I believe refers to the unlawful operation of a vehicle repair service in a residential zone, which is Section 37 L3C, Regulations for Home Occupations, Prohibited Home Occupations, Auto Truck, RV Repair Service. The board's approval of this amendment last spring gave us hope that something would be done about what was happening next door to us and we did have an opportunity to meet many members of the county or many county employees and yet one year later now, this has not been resolved. It should have been resolved probably within 90 to 120 days maximum. So I'm here today to thank you for giving us that opportunity to file, but I'd also like to know from the board, is this something that you can address further to resolve some of this litter and junk in our county? Or is there someone else? Can you tell me someone else? Where else do I go to try to solve this problem in the county? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roper. Wayne Hollands.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisor. Wayne Hollands, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I just wanted to give you a little update on our progress out there in Golden Valley as far as the trash removal. April 8 was our three-year anniversary of having formed the group of the Cactus Cleaners out there. And to date, we've cleaned up 252,655 pounds of trash, 26 boats and 9,461 tires. Just want to say I appreciate all your support that allows us to do that and we're continuing on and got cleaned up three of them this week. I think we got going Springs tomorrow, Thursday, and we're doing another cleanup on Tuesday, tomorrow. And then of course, we got the chloride cleanup coming up here, the community cleanup I'll be taking part in. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollands. Thank you for your work. Ken Works.
Good morning, my name's Ken Works. I'm currently serving on the Board of Directors of the Santa Fe Ranch Property Owners Association and lately I've been receiving a lot of complaints about a bright light on a tower down there that it's a strobe light, should turn red at night, but it's not, it's staying white all night long. So I called around and it's a BNSF tower, telecommunications tower, and they gave me a phone number to call and I called it and gave them the tower number. It's tower number 1260661. And they told me that it's FAA compliant and it has to do with an agreement between the railroad and the telecommunications company, or the FAA rather. So I didn't seem, they were all quite polite and easy to talk to and informative, but the white, the light is going to stay blinking, white strobe light all night long and it's upsetting the residents in the area. So I called Chris Ballard and she told me that it may be on, maybe beyond the control of the county, but I thought I would bring it to the attention of the supervisors anyway to see if there's something we can do about it. There's another tower nearby with no lights, day or night on it and if you're driving down Interstate 40 at night, south of Yucca, east or west of Yucca, you can see it, it's real bright and it stands out and it's pretty annoying to the residents and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bruce Hopkins.
Good morning, name's Bruce Hopkins and we live out in Golden Valley and I was looking at a renewal of a special use permit. See, I guess I can, I brought all these pictures, so I hope I have enough time, I might need five minutes. But, well, how do you do that? Top, there's no top.
You're getting close.
There we go, okay. Anyway, this is for a, what they're trying to call a dog breeding kennel and the difference between a puppy mill and a dog breeding kennel are extreme and that's exactly what this place is. Now it says that the commissioner- And that's exactly what this place is. Now, it says that the Commissioners recommended approval by unanimous vote. Well, this is what they're voting on. This place has been this way for over six years. Originally, they were in this little blue trailer and you can see, you can see that there's a black plastic fence back here that hides where the kennels were. And this is, this is what we've been looking at there for six years. You can see they cleaned the house out. I don't know if they're raising dogs in it, but evidently they approved this without ever going out there. This is on Araby Road in Golden Valley. Now, here's a picture of the new place that's right next door to the blue one. And this is what we've been looking at for about four years there. And this is at the, the new residence that they're asking to renew the zoning permit for. This is all in that house within the house or within the area of the house. Here's an overall picture of it here. And the gentleman that does the Golden Valley cleanup thing might be interested in this. Here's a long view. It shows the zoning permit there. And this is an interesting little picture here. You see the little white dots there? Wow, it's hard to see. Those are little silver stainless steel bowls that are all turned upside down. There's no water in them. This is, this is the hard one. This is taken from my backyard, right? And my printer ran out of ink, but I live less than 100 yards from this place and I've been listening to the dogs and puppies bark every morning and every afternoon for the last six, seven years. And I don't know if this is going to show up or not. That's from my backyard. This is the new house and this is the old house, which is, they're almost side by side. They're about 30 feet apart. Now, I don't know how they could approve a renewal of this zoning permit because that place is nothing but a junkyard and it's been that way for six years. So I just, I just kind of think that they ought to extend the time of saying okay to that permit. And you all and the Commissioners, whoever they are, go out and look at that place before you renew this. Because you're never going to clean up Golden Valley if you let this go on in perpetuity just by saying, oh yeah, okay, we'll sign it off. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Good morning. I'm Sherida Lynn and I'm the founder of For the Love of Paws Domestic Animal Rescue and Sanctuary. And I just wanted to say thank you for taking into consideration extending our special use permit with no expiration date. We have worked very, very hard for 14 years to provide an exemplary facility for the cats and dogs and ferrets and bunnies of Mojave County that are abandoned, neglected, surrendered. And so I just wanted to say thank you. And I also wanted to just appear so if you had any questions about anything we're doing, because hopefully we won't be back to see you again.
Really can't respond to your questions, but if you want to visit after the meeting, we'd be glad to.
No, I just was saying if you had any questions about our renewal or anything you want to know about what the rescue is doing before you vote on the renewal without expiration because if it's without expiration, I don't have to come back, right?
I believe so.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions? We are working very hard to-
This is for item 11 and we really, it's call to the public and we really can't respond to your questions-
Oh, okay.
...this portion. We can pull item 11 and talk to it at that time.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, when you called me up, I just thought that's what it was for.
Not a problem. So we'll see you here-
So you want me to wait until item 11?
No, we've got a few more things. Yes, please wait till item 11.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Boone?
Good morning. Michael Boone, 2210 Pallaverty North, Lake Havasu City. I come to you folks without not having some knowledge of what I'm talking about. I've been a firearms instructor and a law enforcement instructor for over 30 years. I'm licensed in three states as an instructor and I'm a factory-trained Glock armor and a law enforcement firearms instructor. And I've also attended NRA Law Enforcement Training School. So the comments I'm about to make are not coming from somebody who just sits at the range in plinks. I was reading item 20 and I'm concerned about all these suppressors that are trying to be bought for these patrol rifles. The price, after I did some research, is about $200 more than other competitive bidders had they been given the opportunity to bid on this contract. And in reading the contract, I don't think it's necessary to go directly to Proforce. They could go to other people. Patrol deputies do not use rifles under most circumstances. They're carrying a handgun. Sheriff Schuster's comment about hearing, when we discussed this with industry experts, you shoot your handgun more than you shoot a patrol rifle. So saying that would affect your hearing has a lot of questions to it. You have a more opportunity to lose your hearing driving a patrol car with a siren blaring. In fact, the Fire Department has done extensive studies on hearing loss and sirens. That's why they wear the headsets. I see nowhere in any of the requests that he's made for this money what he's going to do about training officers. That requires some specific training. Is there going to be costs for going out to training? I haven't seen any policy on when they can use a suppressor and when they can't use a suppressor. So that's an issue. I don't have a problem with his SWAT team requirements. Those are necessary for a SWAT team, but to have them just on every patrol rifle just because you want to buy them, I don't think that's a proper use of money. I think there's a lot of other things that, you know, that money could go for, such as training. I talked to deputies and they're hungry for training. They're not hungry for suppressors. They're hungry to get trained. They're hungry to be safe every day. And as he's always talking about more deputies, they are. But to buy suppressors for patrol rifles when they're hardly ever, if ever, be used is not a good use of public money, wherever you're getting it from. And I don't, I would implore the Board to do some more research on this before they approve this. Because I'm sure there's other equipment that they need in their cars, far more than a suppressor, that they may never use in their entire career. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Okay, that's the end of the call to the public. And now we have a presentation on the Dangerous Building Abatement Program. Mr. Walsh?
Good morning. Chairman Watson, members of the Board, I appreciate this opportunity to share a little information on our Dangerous Building Abatement Program that we have in the Development Services Department. This program began in 2009 and through this program, we, the county identifies dangerous buildings, notifies the owners of the problem, and then, if not addressed within a reasonable timeframe, the county acts to abate the hazard and then liens the property. The program is run under the authority of the 2012 International Building, International Property Maintenance Code, which was adopted by the Board under Ordinance 2015-04. Arizona Revised Statutes and County Ordinance, Arizona Revised Statutes 11-268 and Mojave County Ordinance 98-02 also provide additional backing for this program. The program was, is funded through a $1 per ton public health fee that's collected at the landfills. For every ton of trash that's deposited, $1 is collected. And that dollar is then split between the Dangerous Building Abatement Program and the Public Nuisance Abatement Program, which is, Dangerous Building Abatement is run by Development Services and the Building Division. The Public Nuisance Abatement Program is run by Environmental Health. This, this fee generates roughly about $60,000 per year to each program. So building generates about $60,000 and, and Environmental Health sees about $60,000 for this. That $60,000 is then used to, to run the program and abate those properties. This current fiscal year, we've been able to realize 15 abatements so far. We have nine more with notices to proceed. And currently, we have about 87 open cases that we're, that we're putting through the process. 24 for this fiscal year that we've got scheduled is kind of a high number for us. We had a little bit of a surplus saved up, so we were able to do a few more buildings this year. But a reasonable number, based on the funding that we see, is probably anywhere between five and 10 buildings per year. The costs come in anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 per building. So roughly, we can do anywhere from five to 10 buildings per year. Let's see. So the question is, what qualifies as a dangerous building? The International Property Maintenance Code, Section 108, basically defines what, what a dangerous building is. Generally, the definitions center on being unsafe or unfit for human habitation. They include factors of danger to life, health, property, or safety, or the safety of the public and/or inhabitants of the structure. They are also, also considered in that, in that definition is the likelihood of the structure to collapse. And then, what the program does not address, unfortunately, our dangerous buildings become attractive nuisances and they attract things like drugs, squatters, zoning violations, and trash. This program, however, is focused solely on the, the structure itself and the danger that it imposes. Drugs, squatters, zoning violations, and trash, while those are a nuisance to the community, this program cannot directly go after those. This is designed just for the, the structure itself. So what we have to do as a department is go and look and see if the structure does pose a hazard, then we can go in and use this program to abate it. Those, these, these items in and of themselves, though, do need to be addressed through, through another form, whichever area has jurisdiction or authority over those issues. And that, that's basically my, my brief presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and, and appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It appears your number of complaints are going up. Is that correct?
We've had a pretty steady number. I know, looking at some of the, the numbers that we've had back in, when it was first established, I know they had somewhere around 100 cases that they were doing. As far as complaints themselves, I would say we're, we're at least steady to, to if not increasing. That, that would be accurate, on the actual complaints.
And that basically adds to the workload of whoever's doing this?
Yeah. When, when we receive a complaint, what we'll do is we'll take and send out an inspector. And we've got one inspector that oversees the dangerous building portion for us. They'll go out, inspect the building, verify whether it is a dangerous structure or not, and then they'll bring it back. And based on what their findings are, if it's a dangerous structure, they'll also look at the severity of the danger. If it's an imminent threat and needs to be addressed right away, if it's something that we can get into the queue and prioritize among the other, like I said, we've got 87 open cases right now. And we try and get the most dangerous ones to the top of that list.
The thing that was bothering me was it looks like it could be into a bigger department problem than, than just one person and, and the staff that you're using. How are we doing on getting liens taken care of? Are we getting reimbursed? I mean, because obviously you don't have that much money to do this with.
You know, it, it's a hit or miss, I guess I'd say. We've had some fortune this year in that we've had two of them that we've seen the funding come back that we've spent. But typically, in, in this type of scenario, when it gets to this point, a lot of times you're dealing with abandoned structures, abandoned properties. And part of the struggle that we have in, in running the program is, is identifying who the responsible party is. And once we identify who that is, we notice them. A lot of times, they have no interest in it. So we'll, we go in and abate it because it is a dangerous structure and a danger to the public, but the hopes of getting those funds back are, are pretty slim at times.
Now, I know we had problems before in our liens. How are we doing on our liens? Were we able to lien the property? But are, is our placeholder been moved up or are we still so far down that we don't, we can't just take over the properties?
Currently, dangerous building liens or abatement liens are second in priority to, to tax liens. So tax liens are top priority and then right after that, the, the dangerous building abatement liens are there. So, and that's part of the, the struggle that we have in, in recouping all of our costs is, a lot of times, if, if it's an abandoned building, they've also given up paying on their taxes. So, and really, the, the motivation for the program, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I would like more and more funding to come back so that we could abate more of these structures. But ultimately, the, the motivation for it is removing these, these dangers. So while, while recouping those costs are a top priority for us, the, the high, I guess they're a high priority for us. The top priority for us is removing that danger from, from the public.
Now, can we foreclose on them with our liens?
Yeah, if I could answer that, Supervisor Johnson.
Sure.
Yes, it is possible, but the problem is it's the reality of, of the placement of, of the priorities of the liens. If, if there's already tax liens on it, then we're likely not going to be able to foreclose. Or we probably do not want to because somebody has invested in it. If an investor has already bought up liens on it, then we usually try not to discourage that. Because we want investors to buy up the liens. They're paying, they're buying up taxes by buying up those liens. So the answer to your question is yes, we could, but it's problematic because of the priority of the liens with the taxes. That's the big problem.
I guess where, where I was going with it, that was a question I was going to ask, is if there's liens, somebody bought them, we can't pass those liens on to the new buyer? I mean, they obviously knew what was on the property.
Yeah. And, but that's how we get our liens paid. So what happens is when they sell the property, usually through the closing process, that's when our liens are paid. That's when, when Tim is talking about recouping, that's usually when we recoup it, is when the property is sold.
Now, if I may make one differentiation, if the property owner sells the property, then we, we recoup those liens. However, if it goes for a tax lien sale and is recouped through that, our liens are lost.
That's correct.
Okay. That, that's where I was getting, that's what I thought, that we had that problem. We haven't been able to find a way to correct that yet.
Not yet.
But if we were to foreclose before the liens were sold, then the property would be the county's. And a lot of times, I realize, we're losing money. We're spending more money to clean it up than the property's selling for. But at least we get something back because it's kind of sad that the taxpayers are paying to clean up a piece of property that some guy's buying for back taxes and they're paying for all the cleaning. That's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
And if I may-
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
If I may, to your point Supervisor Johnson, we, we have had discussions with, with the Attorney's Office and with the Treasurer in trying to, to really find a good game plan on, on addressing that issue. And I believe we've had some good discussions, some good ideas, and it's just a matter of getting to the, to a point where, where it benefits the county in, in a whole.
I believe we have-
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Angus would like to speak?
Yeah. Out of the three, out of the six years I think I've been sitting on this, on this board, we have made these priority liens a priority at CSA. And we've tried to get CSA to help us lobby for it at the state level to do, to do it through the law. And we've been unsuccessful. It started actually Joy Brotherton. It was her project, her first year. And unfortunately, it didn't, we didn't follow through on it. And then we brought it back the next year and what, and then I kind of took it over. And what I'm finding out is unfortunately, at the state level, the Realtor lobby, the real estate people don't want this because they believe that it will be more difficult to sell these properties if these liens have to be taken care of. I don't believe, I, we had a lot of support from the other- I don't believe, we had a lot of support from the other counties. I think if, you know, we worked with our legislators and really went down there and talked and lobbied, I think that we could do it through the state. So, I just wanted to put that out there, and maybe we can try again next year.
Yes. Thank you, Supervisor Angus. That's my thought also. I do have a question for you, Mr. Walsh.
Sure.
Since the inception about nine years ago, how many structures and properties have we abated?
Unfortunately, I don't have that number for you. I can get that and get it back to you. I apologize for not having that in front of me right now.
No problem.
But I will get that to you before.
I know we're in the hundreds, and I really appreciate it. Do we send a notice to the lien holder that the property has been abated?
We do. What we'll do is, when we first get a property in, we'll go and inspect it. And if we find that it is a dangerous building, we'll do a title search to find all interested parties on that. And owners of tax liens would also be an interested party. So, they're all notified so that, and we've had, in doing that, we've had some success in these folks wanting to come forward and clean it so that an additional lien's not placed on the property.
Great. So, there is that two-way communication?
Correct.
Thank you.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop.
I just wanted to say that there's been several abatements recently in the Dolan Springs, Meadview, and Kingman areas. And I have gotten a lot of comments from my constituents. They really, really appreciate this program, and their only complaint is, we can't do more. So, most of my questions that I had were asked by Supervisor Johnson. But one thing I wanted to see if the code enforcement program that we talked about last year would help the abatement program, or are we at a place where we can introduce this again and see if we can get support for taking this abatement program and combining it with the planning and zoning and other departments to where we have one central area where everybody works together?
Definitely. We try right now, as is, between zoning and building, both of which are part of Development Services, we try and coordinate our efforts between them. Definitely, and increased code enforcement program would enable us, would give us more, I guess firepower would be the analogy, to be able to address more of these, to be able to go out and inspect more, do it more in a combined effort to try and identify what the violations are. If it is a dangerous building, then we go that route. If it's a zoning issue, then we address it through zoning. So, that would definitely be an option that would help, not just in dangerous buildings, but in blighted areas and these types of problems.
Okay. Well, you know, it looks like the economy is definitely improving, and our revenues are going up. It looks like we're probably going to be able to budget, balance the budget this year. So, I think maybe this year or next year, we need to seriously look at that code enforcement program. And then, the last question I have for you is, has the county ever communicated with private companies that do abatements to see if we can hire out some of this work to a company that specializes in the abatement process?
We currently, we currently, under our program, we have a number of contractors that we have on contract that we will use to go out and abate the properties. So, what we'll do is, we'll go out and investigate, look at it. If it is a problem, we'll make the proper notices, give the property owner an opportunity to cure the wrong. And once that timeframe's up, then we'll use one of our contractors that we currently have on contract to go out, they'll give us a price for it. And then, based on those prices and everything, we'll go out and we'll abate it. So, we are currently using contracted help to perform the actual abatement itself.
Okay. I think my thinking was, I met a person who has a company that does abatements, and I believe she's been contacting other county department heads to see if her company could help Mojave County. And I don't know if, she's in the audience today, Leslie Tyler. I don't know if anybody's had any communications with Ms. Tyler, but apparently, she has a company that does this, and if she can do it cheaper than the county, sounds interesting.
Mr. Chairman, and absolutely, we welcome any interested parties, and I would encourage that company, if they are interested in doing business with Mojave County, to contact our procurement department. And we would include them on any solicitations that we would have.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, or would you like to speak for just a moment?
[inaudible]. And we're a multi-billion dollar corporation in numerous states, and redo abatements and relinquishings in Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma. [inaudible].
Chairman, if I could just stop. This is not an appropriate time to talk. You can go through the procurement process and talk with procurement about it. That would be the best time to do it, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Esplin? I was getting off track. Get back to your presentation.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman, and one more may.
Supervisor Johnson?
This is kind of like a workman's lien that we put on the property somewhere.
You know, probably I'll have to lien on Ryan on the type.
No. A workman's lien is where you've done work on the property, and then you put a lien on it in order to get paid for the services you did on it.
Right.
So, if I was a contractor and I did a rebuild on your house, then I would put a lien on it to make sure that you paid for the project that I did. That's more, that's more of a workman's lien.
Okay. This, well, this lien we're putting on, how long do we have before we can call it in, until we can go to court and take it?
I don't know when it starts, but I know that there's a five-year limitation on any kind of lien. So, a lien is good for five years. At the end of the five years, you need to renew it, and so, you always renew it. It can be renewed indefinitely. And in terms of when you can do it, I don't know when exactly you can start the process.
Okay. I guess that would be something maybe the board could bring back later to look at, because, you know, it's nice that people are buying the tax liens, but we have the ability to forgive those if the county wants to, you know, if we can take over the property and then forgive the liens and then sell it and at least get our money back, or portions of it might be a good idea.
I certainly think we ought to take a real serious look at it.
I'll just, if I could just add, Mr. Walsh kind of pointed to this. We've addressed it many times. We've talked about this on a number of occasions, because we want to do the same. We'd like to be able to foreclose on appropriate properties so that we can recoup the money from this program. But I'll just give you one example. Back in, I think it was in December of last year, Tim's department approached us and said, here's a list of properties without investor liens. Is there anything that we can do with them? And there was probably a list of maybe, I don't know, 15, 20 properties, and I can only find one eligible property, just based on various different things. There were, some properties had already been paid, so through the, when they were sold, part of the closing, they were done, so we recouped some. Some of the liens were extinguished because of the tax laws. They went through the tax foreclosure, and they were extinguished. Some were improperly recorded, so there was issues there. And so, it just came down to one person that I could find that even be somewhat eligible, and that was going to come up for a tax lien up in February as well. So, I don't even know if that person's still eligible. But, I mean, we want to keep trying. It's not like we don't.
Right.
We want to keep trying, and I'll continue to work with the department to see if we can find an avenue to do it. It's just, it's hard because of the tax laws and things.
Okay. Maybe if the board wants to look at it later to bring it up to date, it'd be great.
Yes, I believe so. And, you know, I recall several years ago, we brought this up as a legislative issue.
Maybe we can do it ourselves.
Yes. And maybe we can relay that information to our representative. Thank you. Any further questions to Mr. Walsh? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items to pull?
Seventeen, sir.
Supervisor Bishop?
I'd like to pull number nine and 20.
None.
Supervisor Angus?
None.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion to accept consent agenda with the exception of nine, seventeen, and 20. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item nine. Supervisor Bishop?
Chairman Watson, if I could just bring to the board's attention, this is a rezone, it's a renewal of a special use permit. We were talking about this beforehand under 11-814-E. I believe we're going to, because there's an objection to this, we're going to need to set it for a public hearing. If you put it on the consent agenda item and it passes, that's perfectly fine. But if there's any kind of issue with it, like an objection, like the gentleman that had earlier, we need to set this one for a public hearing.
I certainly believe that would be hope is to do that, in light of all the information that we received this morning. And thank you again, sir. But it's your district.
Chairman Watson, I'd like to make a motion that we set this for a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set item number nine for a public hearing.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Besides the fact that, I guess this shouldn't have been put on the consent if that's the way it goes, but what if the board was willing, the will of the board was to turn this down or to send it back? Can they do that from this, or all you can do is have a public hearing?
Let me double-check real quick. I just had that up.
I mean Supervisor Bishop's motion, but I was just curious.
I would feel more comfortable, because it seems to suggest that if there's an objection, that we hold a public hearing on it, and I would recommend that we still hold it for a public hearing. I think it'd be a safer, safer route.
I agree. We have a motion and a second. Item nine, to hold a public hearing. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. If we go to a public hearing, do we have to repost this? Do we do all the notifications? See, that's what, that's going to cost us money on this.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, the issue that we ran into with this item is, we did not meet our advertising timeline, so we didn't get the advertising out initially for the public hearing for this specific item. Because of that, had it remained on the consent agenda, we were in line with all the advertising requirements. However, because it became, because the need for a public hearing came up due to the objection, we now need to post those advertisements.
I guess now, we're getting me more confused, because the gentleman that spoke earlier showed us zoning.
We posted the property. We did post the property. However, we didn't, we didn't have the advertising in the newspapers.
Isn't that supposed to be paid for by the applicant?
It's typically included as part of the, that application fee goes towards that.
Yeah.
It just didn't get done.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, the application fees cover, as part of that fee, the advertisements in the newspaper. In this particular round, that deadline was missed. And so, any item that's pulled from the consent agenda, we do have to go back and notice per state statute.
I'm just a little bit scared now that we're, things aren't being done, there aren't consent. If that's what you want to do. I have no further questions.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Esplin. Your recommendation was to go forward with a public hearing, but now that we have this information, would it be better to send it back to P&amp;Z and start all over again?
That would be for you to decide whether you want to do that or not, but you can set it for a public hearing. I would recommend you just set it for a public hearing at this time, and then you guys can then make a decision on it. And that's more in line with what the statute suggests that you do.
Okay. And we can just set that public hearing for after the advertising has?
I believe it's got to be 15 days. Is that correct?
Our recommendation would be that the first meeting in June is when that public hearing would be held.
Okay. I'll amend my motion then, to send it to a public hearing for the first meeting in June.
Second. Okay. We have an amended motion and amended second. Any further questions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see any reason why we're leasing this land. Maybe somebody can explain it to me, Mr. Lutowski?
Mr. Assistant?
May please the chair, board members, administration, and counsel. Supervisor Johnson, the reason is actually multiple-fold. The county did have a lease on this property back in the early to mid 1990s. It was a 10-year lease. It expired. Essentially, given the goodwill of the local Catholic Church, we've continued to utilize the lot under the same terms and provisions of the previous lease. However, the Catholic Church has different needs. I think that this is a wonderful Econ 101 college exam-type question, because it's essentially supply and demand. There is, back in the mid and early 1990s, there was not much of an issue, if any, with respect to parking downtown in Kingman. There certainly is now. I think it was somewhat exasperated when the Arnold Plaza, which was slated to be demolished and put in for parking, was then, you know, sold to the Veterans Society. And that certainly raised the level of objections within the community with respect to the parking issues. And a particular need for this is that when we go out to bid, if we're able to, you know, secure a contractor, we have to have a staging area for the construction. Well, the staging area for the construction is slated to be the parking lot behind the courthouse, between the victim advocates building and the old jail. Well, we lose that parking. We're going to need the additional parking. And for the past 24 years, the county has been utilizing this lot. The Catholic Church at any time could say, stop using it. County Attorney's Office wouldn't be able to use it. The court staff would not be able to use it. And it's just simply a necessity.
I'm not seeing the necessity, because I've been reading the papers where, I guess Mr. Lutowski and his people have been going to the city of Kingman, and they said that they have enough parking spaces, I believe 207 for the courts now, without taking in this, by renting additional properties.
When we presented before the city of Kingman, the city of Kingman was very gracious to amend their code for several issues that we had. It was not just the parking. It was setbacks, it was height, it was the fact that a courthouse wasn't even in C2 zoning under the city of Kingman's. With respect to the parking issue, which was an objection before their planning and zoning commission, we were able to secure from the city an amendment to their zoning requirement with respect to the parking. However, we had 207 spots, 203 are necessary. But the 207 included off-street parking. We only had 89 onsite parking spots. That included the parking lot immediately behind the courthouse. And so, based upon the fact of the historical use of the courthouse, for 100 years, users that come to the courthouse park on Spring Street, they were in agreement that users are going to continue to park on Spring Street. That took us to 207. However... However, when we have the staging area, we do not have 207. We are good then when we have the parking with respect to the Catholic Church site.
So now, how long is this contract good for, then?
This is a ten-year contract with two five-year renewals.
And when, I'm having a problem. We're building a court for $27 million, we don't have enough parking spaces? We have to rent spaces? Or is it only for construction?
We, I don't know where you get the 27 million from, Supervisor Johnson.
Whatever the millions of dollars we're spending on a new court building.
Well, we were able to secure the zoning ordinance from the city of Kingman. We're ready to proceed.
Right, but what, my question is, the parking.
Right.
Do we have enough parking spaces without renting the Catholic Church parking lot for a new court?
Well, according to the zoning, yes.
All right.
However, when you take into the account the staging area, technically, probably not.
I guess I have a problem with the ten-year lease, then I also have a problem with, the lease we had before was, what, $1,400 a year, and we off-traded it with storage?
Well, that also included the county's requirement to maintain that parking lot. And the county went in at significant costs, and I apologize, I don't have the specific numbers with me. And given John Meeting's limited availability, I was not able to verify this. But I recall when I first spoke with Mr. Meeting, when we were in negotiations with the Catholic Church, that by the time you added in the actual cost of the repaving and all the work that was done on that parking lot, it essentially was about $250 a month is what the county was paying. And certainly, that was, you know, a 1994 price. Here we are in 2018. As I say, there wasn't an issue with respect to the parking in the downtown area. That, and obviously with the Catholic Church having built or expanded their church, as I say, supply and demand and their need drove the price to what it was. The church actually wanted $1,500 a month. We were able to get it down to $1,000 a month. Right. And we got rid of the maintenance requirement. We are not required to go in and repave that at a cost of $20,000, $30,000.
This contract, I've noticed some differences in it also. There's no indemnification from either side in this contract. It's also not being signed by the, one of the archdiocese or whatever out of Phoenix, which was on our original contract. There's a local, I'm not sure of the hierarchy of the church, but there's a local person in charge here who have the authority to do that when we previously had to go to the archdiocese in Phoenix, who oversees all of it.
Supervisor Johnson, I can, I followed up on that, and I believe Mr. Espin probably is aware that we spoke, they've cleared it with the archdiocese, they've agreed to and submitted to it. And he's signing on behalf of the archdiocese, so it's virtually the same effect as having them sign it. Just as if you authorized Mike Hendricks to sign on your behalf, it's the same arrangement, so. And I might just add that I've visited with both the churches on either side of the courthouse. And as being, trying to be good neighbors, and trying to work with these organizations, and be an effective downtown presence, and representing the county of Mojave County, it makes sense for us to work with these organizations and to respect their, you know, responsibilities and the things that they're doing. And I think this is a fair arrangement. And again, I've spoken with both the Catholic Church and the Episcopal Church on both sides, both of the ministers, and worked with them. And so we certainly feel that in the grand scheme of things, this would make a lot of sense. And I know they've budgeted it already in the budget. I don't think it's gonna, you know, cause Mojave County to run over money or cause a budget effect. So I'm hopeful that you'll be supportive of it from that perspective as well. Thank you, thanks.
What about the indemnification that's not on this?
And maybe Mr. Espin can speak to that as well, but in working through that, there is some language on indemnification, but I understand that what's in there is adequate. But that, maybe Ryan can explain that a little better.
So paragraph seven addresses the indemnification that we will indemnify them. I mean, it's a matter of, it's a matter of negotiating and contracting. What will the parties agree to? What will they agree to? And in this case, from my understanding of the negotiations, the Catholic Church insisted on an indemnification. I mean, that's commonly, if you're using something, if I'm using your property, I'm going to agree to indemnify you. That's usually what happens. We're using their property, so we would indemnify them. Did we want it? Not necessarily. But you get what you can, and through the process of negotiations, and you say, okay, well, we'll budge on this, we'll go with this, we'll try for this, and this is what we came up with. We were able to change some terms of it so that we could limit it to only negligent or willful misconduct, as opposed to a blanket indemnification. We were not comfortable with a blanket indemnification that would have indemnified every aspect of it, regardless of whether it was negligent or not. But this is what the Catholic Church was willing to go with. And so it's a matter of whether the county wishes to agree with it, and this is what they've presented to us. And from a legal standpoint, it's perfectly legal. It's whether it's something that is acceptable to the board.
Supervisor Johnson, risk management did suggest that the county have indemnification in it. And the point that Mr. Espin is making is well-taken. This is not county land that we're, that someone else is coming on and using county land, and we want their indemnification. We're coming onto their land. We are conceivably the one that may cause something to occur. So it's only proper that we give them an indemnification. Mr. Espin is correct. We limited the scope of that indemnification. It is not a blanket indemnification.
Then I'm not arguing over that, I'm just saying that they're not giving us an indemnification on this too, because at the same time, we can, it goes both ways. Usually you have an agreement between two parties, and both parties indemnify the others on this, because we're renting a piece of property from somebody who doesn't actually even pay us tax dollars, and they're not even giving us an indemnification. I just have problems with it. And a ten-year lease, if we have 207 spaces without it.
Well, I believe the First Amendment talks about something along the lines of freedom of religion, such that we're not, or excuse me, Second Amendment, such that we're not going to be turning around and taxing the church entity.
I understand that, but they're turning right around and turning it into a business by leasing their property to us. So, you know. Those are the only questions I have, I just have a problem with it.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson, I have, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I haven't done the math, but this is $12,000 a year for 10 years. How much does that amount to?
Hundred and twenty thousand? Hundred forty-two thousand, twelve times, twelve is 144,000.
There you go, twelve, twelve.
Okay, and that number again was?
Hundred and forty-four thousand.
Okay.
I mean, you're, another alternative is to condemn it.
I think that might be a little extreme.
That might be a little extreme.
I've got a question.
And that's not necessarily being very neighborly either.
Right.
Are there other properties that may come up in the general vicinity that we could purchase in the next year or two? Maybe reduce the lease to maybe a year-to-year lease?
Well, I would think that by the time you purchase a property, and virtually every property surrounding the area has some type of structure on it, so you're gonna have the cost of removing the structure. And then you're gonna have the cost of paving. I mean, we did not see any economic benefit in trying to, you know, do something along those lines. We can't match it up dollar-for-dollar with respect to tearing down the old jail. There was talk at one point in time, should we tear down the victim's advocate office? But that would only give us a limited number of spaces, and there would be a significant cost in tearing down the victim's advocate's office, and then having to pave it. So I mean, from a dollar standpoint, we couldn't find anything that was literally a better deal than this.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hendricks. I just wanted to say that that parking lot has been used, in use for years and years. And the purpose of that parking lot is for the continued use and convenience of the existing courthouse and of the county attorney's office. And that's why we're contemplating that action today. As the judge has mentioned, it's not a necessity for the new facility. It's a convenience for the construction. But regardless, even if that new facility wasn't being contemplated today by the board, we would be coming back before the board to ask for renewal of this parking lot based on the use at the existing courthouse and our other county facility.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. I'm in the same line of thinking. Did, Judge, did, when you were meeting with Mr. Metting, did he indicate to you how long it would be before they would have to do any major maintenance on the parking lot?
The, that was part of the negotiations with the Catholic Church, that we would not be required to go in and do any type of major maintenance.
No, I understand, we're not going to be required.
Right.
But at what point in time did Mr. Metting feel that there would be a requirement for improvement?
You know, I did not specifically ask him that question. I mean, we looked at it from the standpoint that the parking lot is as in good a condition as most of the county parking lots.
Okay.
I mean, I take a look at the parking lot outside the county administration building here. That parking lot is as in good as condition as what we have here.
And that's the point I'm trying to prove, is that if we don't have to maintain it, that takes us out of that two, at some point in time, a $250,000 repay. If we do pay and they take the maintenance, then we're free of that maintenance obligation.
I mean, it would seem to me that if we decide to renew it, there may kind of come a point in time where you might wanna, you know, put some oil over the top of it. I mean, not necessarily repave it, but rehab it, but there's no requirement for us to do that.
Right.
I mean, who knows what the downtown area is gonna look like in 10 years? I, you know, no one's got a crystal ball.
If you'd have been here this weekend, it's a vision that I wouldn't have believed 10 years ago. Very active, very vibrant community for the weekend. Any further questions for Judge Gerler or Mr. Anderson?
I have one more. Have we, have we put out any public outcry asking for properties that owners may consider selling to the county for a parking lot that's in close proximity? So in other words, instead of renting a parking lot for 10 years and having nothing, there are vacant properties out there, or buildings that wouldn't take that much to abate, where we could build our own parking lot, and then we own it? Or has there been any discussion of taking the old jail and making that into a parking garage?
Supervisor Bishop, yes, we've, I had some discussions with Public Works on knocking down that jail, converting it into a parking garage. I don't know that I have any specific numbers, but I think you run up into the millions, a million, million-five. You know, I spoke to the Father Shaw from the Episcopal Church next door. They're landlocked, they're interested in possibly selling. But again, you have, you know, three buildings on that lot. That certainly could be an option, but I don't know what the market value of that would be, what they would want to sell to us, but. And then I've visited with the homeowners behind, next to the old jail. They didn't indicate any, you know, they're both happy to, living there. Those are small lots that wouldn't get us much, but, you know, I didn't specifically ask them if they'd like to sell. And then, you know, we've got DES on the corner, I don't think they're going anywhere, behind us on Pine Street. So, you know, I just, in that vicinity, I'm just not aware of anything other than perhaps the Episcopal Church that, again, indicated an interest in moving out of that area just because they're landlocked and they'd like to grow. But, you know, again, I imagine that would run into several hundred thousand dollars to purchase that and then level it. So that's the local landscape that I've talked to. Unless the city of Kingman would move up to Palo Christi and vacate that area, but I, that's probably, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get in that political discussion either. So I don't know if that answers your questions very well or not. But we have, I've done a little bit of walking around and talking to the neighbors, so. I could do some more if you'd like.
Supervisor Johnson.
Just for, maybe Supervisor Bishop knows it, but when this building was built here, the county attorneys were supposed to move into this building. They chose not to move into this building, because obviously it's closer for them to walk across the street. So now we're renting, we're renting space, because it breaks down to, at least what I'm getting, is that they need this for construction. That's what they need, well, they need this overflow space so they can use our building for that. But if the county attorneys would have moved into this building, there wouldn't have been a problem with parking. That's all.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Well, there were a number of events that lead us to today. And had we been able to demolish the old Arnold Plaza, that would have given us sufficient number of lots. But that didn't occur. Others changed their minds, and so we're here where we're at today. And I'll make a motion to proceed with item number seventeen.
I second the motion.
Any further questions? If there are no further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that's three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item 20. I believe, was it Supervisor Johnson, did you have, did you pull this out?
Actually, I pulled this item, because there's been questions that I've been asked, and I really can't answer them. So for the benefit of my constituents, and of course, Mr. Boone as well, I just needed explained a little more, understanding that the supervisors don't control what the sheriff spends his money on. So basically, the reason I pulled it was just for education of the public. And I intend to vote yes on this, but I think the public deserve to understand a little more about why deputies need suppressors.
And luckily, we have the sheriffs here today, so they can provide a little more insight.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop. Kind of to rebute Mr. Boone's comments, the patrol officers need the suppressors. Active shooter incidents are more prevalent today than ever before. And the individuals that are going to respond first to these incidents are the patrol deputies, not the SWAT teams. So first and foremost, that's the reason that we want to issue them to all patrol officers. As far as specific questions, Supervisor Bishop, do you have anything else?
No, my reason for pulling this was just to educate the public because of all of the outcry and the questions about why deputies need suppressors. So I was just giving you the opportunity to kind of.
And first and foremost, they are suppressors, they are not silencers. There's a huge misconception that that's what they are. I do have a short video to help explain, and so you can see exactly what we're talking about here.
Great, thank you.
Glad you came.
If you notice, they were not wearing ear protection. Also, the officers can communicate, such as in an active shooter incident, with one another. It's very impractical to respond to one of these and put hearing protection in.
That answers my question, other than maybe one for procurement.
I have one question while he's up there. Deputies don't carry shotguns anymore?
They do, they carry both. Shotguns and patrol rifles, as well as a handgun. And I might add that Mr. Boone said, well, they'll never be used. Well, if that's the case, most officers don't ever use their sidearm, but we still issue those. Most officers don't need their body armor, they usually expire at the five years, but we still issue that.
I think you've demonstrated or attempted to demonstrate the difference between a suppressor and a silencer, and I think many of the people think that it's a silencer, which it's not. Suppressor still puts out a, a great deal of noise, but it's not as much as an explosive from a bullet. And your point about being able to communicate with the other officers on the scene is a good point. I know when I'm out shooting and, and I'm not wearing ear protection, you know, my ears will ring for several days after that. So I can certainly see your requirement for that, and explaining the difference between a suppressor and a silencer, I think is very appropriate for the audience to understand that this is not, it's not silence, that there is a remarkable snap to it afterwards, after the weapon's fired.
That is correct. Can I add one more, a little bit of information? Last summer, we had an officer-involved shooting where one of our detectives was forced to fire his, his rifle in the cab of his truck because he was being shot at. To this day, he still has ringing in the ears. There's an industrial claim, I believe, and he may end up with some long-term hearing loss, and that's what we're trying to eliminate, not only for us, but for the community as well.
Any further questions for Mr. McGee? I think they've answered all the, or asked all the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Bishop, you pulled the item?
One more question for our procurement.
All right. Good morning, Peggy.
The, the procedure that was followed, could you just go over that real quick?
Absolutely. Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, members of the board. Proforce is the statewide contractor for this type of product in this state. The contractor met with Lieutenant Sonnier, and they reviewed the different options to make sure that we were buying the product that best met the requirements of the sheriff's department, so we complied with all of the procurement rules related to this process.
Okay. Thank you very much, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Chairman Watson?
Yes, Supervisor Angus.
I, I just have a couple of quick questions. Are these suppressors, is that, is this something that all counties use? I mean, is this sort of a statewide norm, or are we, would we be one of the few? I mean, is this something, a, a normal piece of equipment in law enforcement?
Dean, would you come down and answer the question again, please? Thank you. We're bringing down Officer McKee to answer your question.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, they are being more prevalent within the law enforcement community. There are, I believe, some agencies in the Phoenix metro area that already have suppressors. I know of at least one local agency that is trying to procure some as we speak now.
And how often are they used?
Officer, fire the weapon.
Supervisor Angus, I don't know if I understand your question.
Well, so, is it, is this something that is on, like during training, they're, they're always on whenever a gun is shot?
That is correct, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's all the time, okay. Because like Supervisor Bishop, I too got, surprisingly, I got many calls about this from people who know guns and who were surprised that I supported it. They do not believe that it is a wise use of money, given our, our situation in our sheriff's department, so I have to trust that the elected sheriff knows what he's doing, so I'm going to support this.
I might add that there will be a policy that they will not be able to remove the suppressor once they are issued.
Why would they want to remove them?
Well, we just want to put that in writing because, you know, just like any other piece of equipment, they could be removed by the, by the deputy. So once they're installed, they will be, they will be on the, on the rifle.
Well, now you brought up something I'm, I'm curious about. Is there a reason why, why a deputy wouldn't want them on the, on the weapon?
No, I don't, I don't believe so, but we just want to ensure that that is our policy.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus. Good questions, and I'll guarantee if you've ever had or been close to a .30 caliber hunting rifle or any caliber, you'll appreciate those suppressors for several days after that. Yes, ma'am?
There's some evidence on the suppressors that numerous countries or numerous towns and provinces use them. They lower the decimals down below 130 decimals, which is compliant with OSHA, which limits your liability past an officer report of ear damage, and they're widely used currently even in Arizona.
Great point, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And a second?
We have a motion.
No? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay. Onto our regular agenda, which would be to item 52. Discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution Number 2018-045, amending Mojave County's anti-littering ordinance Number 20203, Mojave County Code Section 14-47 for the purposes of adding and clarifying the Erase Reward Program of reporting illegal dumping to the ordinance and make changes to the definition of litter generator. Mr. Lautowski? I'm sure we're going to have somebody field a question or two.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board. This item is more of an administrative housekeeping issue. I work direct with County Attorney Esplin in regard to recognizing that on June 15th, 2015, the Board amended the anti-littering ordinance to establish the $500 reward for erased cases which lead to the successful prosecution of suspects. However, on April 3rd, 2017, in the context of a Board amendment to the anti-littering ordinance to acknowledge and establish requiring owners of rental property to provide trash collection service for tenants, the Erase Reward, the $500 reward, was inadvertently omitted from the amended ordinance, and as a result, staff is presenting this newly amended version simply to incorporate the $500 reward, which the Board had previously directed in 2015.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Lautowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it addressed in there now that when the Board put this in, it was $500 reward for someone turning someone in who was convicted? Now I see it seems it's talking about they can, that race can advertise for, they don't need to advertise for a reward, but is that still true? If somebody comes in and turns somebody in for illegal dumping and they're found guilty, we give them $500?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, yes, the Erase Program wholly funds this $500 reward on premise of the successful prosecution of cases involving an erased investigation.
I guess you're confusing me now involving erased investigations. I mean, this can be, the sheriff could do this. I mean, if somebody called the sheriff and said, hey, you've got somebody out here dumping, and they came and got him, I guess unless they're kissing it off to the race. But if somebody in Mojave County turned somebody in in the county area for illegal dumping, we give them $500 if they, if it's, they're found guilty, correct?
Supervisor Johnson, this would pertain to erased investigated cases?
Correct.
If, if the case does involve in the successful prosecution.
I guess then, does the sheriff investigate? I mean, what do we care whether race investigates it or not?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor, Supervisor Johnson, Erase in most instances with regard to county cases is the lead investigating agency, so this would pertain to erased investigated cases. Of course, we interface with the sheriff's office as need be, especially as it relates to, you know, identifying instances or suspicions of wildcat dumping that deserve further investigation by which in most instances would, would surmise that the Erase would be the, the lead agency.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Mr. Lautowski, do you know how many awards that we've given, the $500 reward, since inception?
Chairman Watson, I am remiss in not bringing that information with me, but I do recall we've at least done at least one reward.
Yeah, we know we've won, for sure.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Lautowski? Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? This is an open public hearing. Being no one willing to speak, item number 52, I'll close the public hearing for item number 52. Motion approved. Motion?
Second.
And a second for approval. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item 54. Discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-048, that the county engineer be directed to remove Mesa Drive from London Bridge Drive east to its terminus, a length of approximately 530 feet from Mojave County Road Maintenance System, to remove any roadway purchases and to cease maintenance activities on that portion of Mesa Drive. Question for Mr. Lautowski?
Yes, Mr. Lautowski, could you, I know you explained this to me, but I want to see what the options are for the people that are there.
Thank you. Chairman Watson, members of the board, Supervisor Wakamoto, this action concerns staff's request that the Board consider removing a 530-foot segment of Mesa Drive extending east from London Bridge Road in the Desert Hills area from the Mojave County Maintenance System. Staff has identified that there is no definitive indication in the granting statement of this easement across multiple residential parcels on the north side of Mesa Drive, that this easement is in fact in place for public ingress and egress versus ingress and egress that may be enjoyed by the property owners on the north side of Mesa Drive. Now with that said, this is merely an action to consider removing Mesa Drive from the road maintenance system should, in the future, the residents who had provided, whose properties have provided for that easement of ingress and egress, should they desire one or more to repetition the county and its Board of Supervisors to re-accept Mesa Drive for Mojave County Maintenance in the future, those residents would be looked toward to establish the easement in question as bona fide a granting for public ingress and egress, and as a result, then we can move forward and, and present to the Board a reconsideration.
Okay, thank you. There is an option left open to them if, but right now, we are basically trespassing. Is that correct?
Supervisor Wakamoto, it's just been staff's observation with regard to easement that there is no definitive indication that it is available for public use. So we're looking at this intermediate, this particular step and just removing it from the Mojave County Maintenance System, and as a result, then the county not delivering maintenance and operations on Mesa Drive until such time that the residents themselves do wish to reapproach the, the county for that consideration. And I do understand that the residents, at least, at least one that we've been in contact with, you know, had no objection to this matter being considered, so. I just want to expressly make it clear that staff is not necessarily rendering an opinion per se on the status of the easement, but in light of the fact that it's simply not clear that it's available for public ingress and egress, we're recommending that the road be removed from the maintenance system at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Watson, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Sigh.
And a second for approval?
There's somebody.
Of, I'm sorry, please come on down. I'm sorry, Mr. and Ms. Williams, I didn't recognize you earlier.
My name's Mike, and my wife Linda, we own the restaurant on the corner there of Mesa and London Bridge Road, and then we have documents from the surveyor, we had it surveyed, it says it is an easement. It's been an easement since 1967. There's been restaurants on that corner since, for 51 years. All of a sudden, somebody, I don't know who did it, decided that they don't need that road no more, and it's costing the county $500 a year. I'll pay the 500, not a problem. This is a, a picture of the highlighted area on the left here is the improvements that we had to put in for our conditional use permit. That is actually facing Mesa Drive. They made us pave this, do all the improvements and landscape it, put curbing in for water runoff. That cost us a little over $18,000. Here is a picture of what this guy is trying to do. The ropes and all that paving, that, that's stuff that we had to do. Okay? And then he's got the roads blocked off, here's another one, and another one, and this one shows the condition of the road, which is quite good, I believe, for desert hills. And then during this little process of somebody making a, a wrong decision, this gentleman has decided to take things in his own hand. Here's a police report that he walked up to the waitress, slapped her in the face in the parking lot. He's got dope, marijuana, paraphernalia on him at the time, criminal damages. He took a bag of powdered semen and dumped it in a '67 Mustang convertible. This guy has nothing, so how's this person supposed to recoup the money to fix this car? Jaime Delatorre operates that business. I spoke to Jaime this morning. Business is off 20% at this location for the simple reason, people would like to bring their hot rods there. They like the atmosphere, the patios, it's real tropical, they can smoke, mingle, whatever they want to do. They won't come, because this guy is going to tear their cars up. Someday, someone's going to take the law in their own hands, and it's going to be a bigger mess, and I don't think this is fair at all. We hired an attorney, which I brought copies of all this stuff for you gentlemen and ladies. He says that property is an easement. This guy walked up to me and my wife and said, well, you know, I'll, I'll rent you this property for some, yeah, I forgot what he said, I was very upset about it. And I don't understand, trying to save the $500 according to the newspaper that Mr. Logoski put in the article in the paper, I don't understand the 500 bucks he should have. I would have approached the other people involved and see what they thought about it. And I'd be more than glad to pay the 500 bucks. I'll pay it by the year, I don't care. But whatever, whatever it takes to solve this problem, keep the peace there, this guy's only been there a month. And it was, it was his parents' property before they passed, I was told. So, this has created one heck of a mess.
Hmm.
And I don't understand it. And I don't know what we can do about it. And you're the people that can make the decision on what you suggest we do. Incidentally, the cleanup mess the gentleman was talking about a while ago, on the adjacent street over, as you face a restaurant, third lot back, there's enough trash to fill this building. We tried forever to get that done. Me and Linda bought the property, and we're cleaning it up at our own expense.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Williams.
I think it was a great idea, this abatement thing. I think it was a wonderful idea. This is the worst piece of property I've ever seen, as we speak.
Thank you. And now it's, you've brought forth a number of possibilities and questions that I have. The first one I have was with Mr. Lautowski. Do we have the proper easement on that property or the right of way?
Chairman Watson, this action again concerns the improved portion of Mesa Drive as it extends across an easement granting that is sourced to residential parcels on the north side of Mesa Drive.
Okay, maybe I'm not.
Staff recognizes that there is an easement in place. Staff has examined that easement and does not have any definitive indication that that easement has been established for public ingress and egress.
Okay, so here's, that's the rub.
So, that's correct. The road does cross in easement. The question becomes whether that easement has been established for public ingress and egress versus only ingress and egress to be enjoyed by those residential properties on the north side of Mesa Drive. It is those residential properties through history that made that easement, that placed that easement granting in place, that exists today.
Okay. That helps clarify to me, at least, the situation.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to ask your permission, but may I ask a question?
Mr. Hendricks.
And I apologize, I didn't look real closely at this particular issue. Given London Bridge Road going north and south, and then this particular easement heading to the east from London Bridge Road, which property is owned by the gentleman that's posting the no trespassing signs?
It is our.
First piece of property?
It is our understanding it is the first piece of property on the north side of Mesa Drive.
And the easement is solely on that piece of property?
That is correct, County Manager Hendricks.
So, truly, the business on the, these, this gentleman's business is on the south side, and it doesn't encompass the easement that's being posted?
County Manager Hendricks, that is exactly correct, yes. The easement does not cross the property on the south side where the business resides.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I wanted to know is if a portion of the easement that's being blocked off or being claimed in trespass was owned by this particular business, and apparently, it's being claimed by the property owner, and the easement is totally encompassed within that property owner's property, and if there's not, you know, definitive proof that that is a public easement. I don't think we're arguing whether there's an easement there. Obviously, there's an I and E, ingress and egress easement over the property. What we're saying is that easement was never granted that we can find for public purposes, or we don't have definitive information, that the easement was actually granted for public purposes. And we've looked on the deeds and also on the plat, I believe, and it's just not there. The deeds say I and E, but doesn't designate the easement any further. So, basically, it's a, people can travel over the property, that person can travel over the property, but the public, until that right is established, doesn't have the right to that I and E. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Now, I'm a little bit confused. Why is Jaime saying his business is down? Is this?
People won't come there, because he's afraid this guy is going to mess up people. These guys got a hundred-plus thousand dollars in these cars. Me and my wife have some.
Right.
And if you're going to park there, and someone's going to tear your car up or destroy it, they know he has nothing. They have no recourse.
Okay, but that's not the easement. This easement doesn't affect the business that Jaime owns.
The people were parking on our property, right here in this picture, on these improvements that we did. It's all lined and striped.
Mm-hmm.
This is where they park. They don't park on his easement, but they got to drive up his easement to get to my parking spots.
But that's in front of a private residence, not a?
No, it's a, no, no, no. There's a picture, sir, if you can see it.
This is street.
It's the street is on the left of that picture up there. And the improvements of the concrete to the right, that's where the parking, where the restaurant is. If you park there, he'll come over and destroy your car.
On our property?
On our property.
That, okay.
But he's denying access to our property for parking, is what he's doing. Here's a list of.
What's the name of your business?
Kid, I beg your pardon?
Blondie's Bar and Grill.
Actually, Mr. Hendricks has been there before.
Yes, I have.
Yeah. Here's a list of the properties, according to my attorney, that this affects this guy.
What he's trying to do is land lock. He told us that he would charge us to come across his property. We can come across it, but we have to pay him. Also, the customers, he stands out there and screams at them that we have no permits, no licenses, we're illegal. And now, now he's blocked our property completely off. But he stands out there and yells and tells them he's going to harm them if they come into our business. Also, he, a neighbor, he was going to hire to dump a load of gravel in our front door.
But you have other entrances to your property, by London Bridge Road?
We're on the next adjacent street over also. What's the name of it, honey?
Trum, Trumaline.
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 That's the other entrance. It goes, Trumaline, London Bridge Road and Mesa. It's a horseshoe.
All right.
Trumaline is where we bought that property to clean it up. I am going to put additional parking there, but this, this situation with this gentleman and his, the way he attacks things is kind of like not acceptable.
You were saying you found something that showed that there was a road there before, or something that we haven't found?
Well, it's been a restaurant for 51 years, and everybody parks there. I mean, forever.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Hendricks.
This particular item that's before the board today is solely regarding the county asking the board to give us the authority to not maintain this roadway until such time, future time, as the rights of the different property owners are established. Now, this action that we're proposing to take is basically to protect, asking the board to consider is basically to protect the county so that we're not in trespass. It doesn't prohibit these people from pursuing through legal means, establishing their rights for ingress and egress and utilize that easement so they can continue. And once that right's established, what Steve is, Lautowski, Mr. Lautowski has said, is that we would bring this back in front of the board to reestablish the maintenance of that roadway. Not whether, you know, the question isn't whether these people have the right to utilize this roadway or not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Chairman, if I may add to that, that's exactly correct. And there's nothing to stop these people here to enforce their rights. And I imagine your attorney has probably told you that, that there's various different ways that you can establish an easement. It may be by conveyance, or it may be by necessity, or maybe by what we call prescription. There's different ways that it could be done, but I'd recommend you talk to your attorney about that to see about ways that you can enforce that, to see if you have an easement. Talk with your attorney about that, to see ways that you could do that so that you can access the property, and the other homeowners can access their property. But manager, County Manager Hendricks is correct. The issue here is whether we should continue to maintain it or not, and if it appears that it's a private, private road, that it's not, that has not been conveyed to the public, then that's, that's the question.
Right.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, my question is, you have business owners that have gone down there and bought businesses year after year after year, and they run businesses there, and they pay us tax dollars, and as, so do the residents there, and we've maintained a road. Now, we're going to say, we're washing our hands of a road, and these people have run a business there, and we're saying it's up to them to straighten it out? I mean, that seems like we're liable in there somewhere, because if you've been maintaining a road in front of my house, now you want to walk away. It's different if I got a residence, but if you got a business, I don't know, I think we need to take a little better look at that.
I would tend to agree with you. And if I were you folks, I would be livid.
Yes.
Well, it's, it's just a dangerous situation, what's going on. And with him and blocking everything off, he actually put a rope across the whole road so no one could come into their properties. So, we're dealing with a real sticky situation, real dangerous situation, and we really need your help.
Well, as Mr. Hendricks explained today, it's, it's our decision to remove Mojave County from the liability of the tertiary maintenance. I wished I could solve your problem, but it's either yes or no, and it's on that issue.
I don't particularly, Mr. Watson, I don't understand, for the $500 a year, it's going to cost me $100,000 to sue this guy. I don't understand why, why we're in this position when this has been available since Habasu was ever thought of being there. All of a sudden, somebody decides that they don't want to do it no more, and it's, it's a burden against my customers. I feel for them, because they don't want to go to a slaughterhouse. They want to go to a place and have a good dinner, and talk, and BS, and show off their cars and stuff. They're not very happy about this situation. And I don't understand why, after 51 years, that all of a sudden, somebody decides they don't want that road in the county no more. It costs somebody a lot of money to put that road in originally, and I think I'm looking at them, you know? And I don't understand, once you forget it, it's going to go to hell, pardon my French, and it's never going to get fixed. And then it come time for you to take it back. We don't want it, it's too bad a shape. So, I see your point totally. But for the little bit of money it costs to maintain that road, we're willing to pay it. I haven't got a problem with that.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop.
I understand that what's before us is protecting our liability, and we shouldn't have been paving that road and maintaining it to begin with. And I don't know when that happened, but it was probably before most of us were on this board. I would like to see the county help your business. I'm not sure that we can, but, Mr. Lautowski, if, once this is approved, is there any recommendations that we can, we can make that would direct these people on the next step to bring, to bring this road back into our maintenance system, once the right of way is established?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, County Manager Hendricks and County Attorney Espin really presented it very well in the context of, if the gentleman here can ascertain through legal analysis and possible related actions that the easement is in fact been established for public use, then any individual, a single individual entity can repetition the county to reconsider and reaccept Mesa Drive for maintenance. It presently is a dead end residential road. It does not necessarily encumber a tremendous amount of traffic, so I do not foresee a rapid deterioration in its pavement condition, provided that attention can be given to the other matter at hand, meaning the status of the easement, not the matter that's being contemplated today. But if that can be handled in a reasonable, efficient amount of time, I wouldn't foresee the condition of the road to degrade substantially to where staff can come back to the board and present such a maintenance action, bringing the road back in the road maintenance system, and represent that the road is more or less reasonably the same condition as when it was removed.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And to Mike and Linda Williams, I'm sure you've considered contacting the sheriff's office, maybe an order of harassment and those avenues that are available to you until such time as we can get this easement worked out. And it sounds like you definitely need to speak to an attorney and get some help.
Thank you so much.
So, do we get to use it, or don't we?
Mr. Lautowski, because it's been in use for over seven years, is there no precedence that after use for this amount of time, that they would be able to continue to use it?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Wakam, well, that's a very intelligent question. However, from the staff's standpoint, we could not render that, that opinion or recommendation that would really fall to a legal analysis and opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Wakamoto, if I may answer that, Chairman Watson. I mean, my experience with easement deals with private easements. I don't know what the, what the rights would be for the public. So, that, Steve is correct, it would be something we would have to research, so I can't answer that. There's just different ways that easements can be created for private, private people, and that's what I was talking about. It can be conveyed, you threw it, you put it in a deed, and you convey it that way, or it can be done by necessity. If, if that's the only way that you can get to your property, then it can be an easement by necessity. There's also an easement by prescription, which is, that's the duration element. If it's, if you've been using it for such a long duration, and it's been adverse to the other party, then it could be that. I don't know from the public standpoint. I just don't know the answer to that. I'm only looking at it from private parties, what, the different ways that easements can be created.
Going back and thinking about your question, a number of years ago, a neighbor was telling me that this prescribed method, and he had a fence line that had been in existence for 50 years. And there was this quabble about, from his neighbor, saying that the fence was on his property. And come to find out, the court let the fence stay after being there for 50 years, gave it some kind of a precedence of necessity. Would that be a prescription for these folks, or the direction for these folks to go?
It's a little bit different. What you're talking about was probably what is called adverse possession, where somebody is saying, "I get this portion of land," as opposed to an easement. "I have this portion of land because the, it's been on there, it's been adverse for a long period of time." But it's a similar concept. Easement by prescription and adverse possession are similar. They're cousins to one another, so to speak. I don't know. These, that's why I was urging these, these, these people here to talk with their attorney and see if they have any kind of easements that way, if it's easement by prescription, just what you're talking about. But that would be something that you would talk to your attorneys about. The problem that we have is that, we're talking about the public, you know, can the public do that? Could, would the public have the right to it? I don't know the answer to that. What these people would have to deal with, it's the private, private parties where they're going to have to decide whether they meet those criteria of an easement by prescription that you're talking about, and whether that can be established in court. But that's something that they could do. That would be the avenue to do, similar to what your friend did.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a, we have a motion and a second, I believe. Is that correct?
Who made the motion in the second?
I believe it was Supervisor Bishop and.
And I made the second?
You made the second.
I'm pulling my second.
Okay, so it's just my motion right now?
Correct. Do you have a motion? The motion dies for a lack of second.
Okay.
So, that means there's no action at this point, and the tertiary maintenance will continue. And I wish you the best of luck. I think the board is showing you that we're behind you, kind of in a backward way, but good luck with this individual, and I hope you can succeed. I can believe, after you've made almost $20,000 worth of improvements to your property, I'd be pretty disappointed in that person, too. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good day. Thank you again.
On to item number 55. Discussion possible action. Discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh five eight, accepting the road maintenance petition. Request that East Blake Ranch Road from North Stephen Drive to North Broken Arrow Road, a distance of approximately one thousand eight hundred ninety-five feet, be accepted into Mohave County Road Maintenance Program for Tertiary Maintenance in the East Kingman area of Mohave County.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. I'll second the motion. I think it's awfully close to being in my district also. Further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. I believe, as I'm counting, at least three to one. Item number fifty-six, discussion, possible action, authorize staff to submit the application for an additional seventy-five acre-feet of water from Mohave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District at an estimated cost of two thousand five hundred dollars to be funded from the general fund contingency and to apply for elector status within the district. Pretty self-explanatory.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on this. I'm not seeing any reason why we're buying more water. We already, we got water.
Mr. Hendricks? You'd like to explain? Yes, we do have water, but this would assure us for PPNR, I believe.
I'll, I'll take a shot at this. Right now, it appears what we have on, on this particular piece of property is roughly two, two acre-feet per acre per year, which is actually a residential allocation. The farm is currently being farmed by some sort of consortium, which actually has available to them more than that sufficient water to grow alfalfa, which is about seven acre-feet per acre per year. And that lasts till twenty nineteen. To actually farm a crop like alfalfa, which has been farmed, the county needs about seven acre-feet per acre per year. I know we're not wanting to be farmers, but if we do move forward, like what I'm recommending to the board, to purchase an additional seventy-five acre-feet of water per year, that would allow us to have a hundred and five acre-feet of water per year, which is sufficient to go ahead and farm alfalfa. But more importantly, there's an issue regarding our request. They, MVIDD has no more water to give for farming. So by us requesting additional water necessary for us to utilize our property for its intended purpose, that does a couple of things for us, but most importantly, that means that we need more water. And MVID is saying that we don't have that water to give, yet they can repurpose the water and change its point of use and send that water down to central Arizona. So even though we're going to be in line for this water and they have no water to give, we're showing that we need that water to be utilized in Mohave County along the river. And it provides us with a higher level of standing and a very good argument for them not repurposing the water and sending it down to Phoenix.
I guess the problem, I'm not understanding is it was brought to the board that we would buy this piece of land and this water and we would have, possibly have standing. But now we're saying that we bought a piece of land and then a lease showed up that we really didn't know about. Now we're saying we don't have enough water on that piece of property that we bought to do what agriculture is being done on it now?
And Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I went into this whole thing with both eyes open. There's nothing that really surprised me. I'm saying that when I brought it in front of the board to purchase this piece of property, the reason that I brought it in front of the board was so that we would have standing. We did achieve that. I'm asking the board if they would like to further firm up our argument against MVIDD and further protect what we're trying to accomplish or not. And I believe that can be done fairly, very strongly by this request for additional water. It will provide us with an additional argument and an additional cause of action if MVIDD decides to act badly. And I, the reason I'm bringing it forward to the board is because the collective board, the majority decided that we are going to fight this issue with whatever we have for as long as it takes. And until that changes, I will continue to bring these types of recommendations to the board when I see opportunities.
Is this twenty-five hundred dollars a year?
No, one time. I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
One time only, is it?
That's correct.
But now you have to use that water, right?
Actually, through the leasing operation, that water will be used.
And, and I want to make clear to the board that currently MVIDD, MVIDD says they have no water to give. Yet their proposal is to repurpose that water and transfer its point of use down to additional water that they supposedly don't have to give, transfer that water to CAP down in Phoenix and away from our river communities.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Any further questions? I'll make a motion then for item number fifty-six, to authorize staff to submit application for additional seventy-five acre-feet of water from Mohave Valley Irrigation District, Drainage District.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And those opposed? It appears that it has passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number fifty-seven, discussion, possible action, approve the nominations of Susan McAlpine and Don Martin for appointment to the Wild Horse and Borough Advisory Board.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a wonderful day. Meeting closed.